For Thursday, January 16th. The agenda for tonight's meeting is to approve the meeting minutes from December 5th. The Chriswell Minor Subdivision Public Hearing, the St. Silvers Historical Appropriateness Review for Solar Installation, the Metta Historical Appropriateness Review for Solar Installation. I will now call this meeting to order. All right, so we have the meeting minutes from December 5th. There is something I want to address later on during the Metta part, either Metta Agenda item, but I will accept the motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for the December 5th meeting.
So what?
Motion by Robert, second by Dorothea. All in favor? opposed, none? Motion carried.
Dominic.
And Dominic. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Chriswell Minor Subdivision, so this is a public hearing with that. So, thank you for joining us. You've provided us back the mailers for your budding neighbors and additionally, the town did get some grants and so that requirements. At this point in the hearing for this application, I just want to provide you an opportunity just to let the public know what the scope is of your project and let the sentence or do.
Not much of a scope, just splitting the property at the moment. In the future, hopefully to build a new house because the property is just that beautiful and I just don't need as much.
All right, well, thank you. Before we open up the public hearing, I want to review the rules for the audience. There is a three-minute time limit. If you wish to speak on this, one speaking, state your name and address for the record. Only speak during your turn. One turn per person. Address the comments to the board, not the applicant. No foul language or swearing, and there's no discrediting the public and the applicant just within the court. All right, I will now accept a motion to open the public hearing for the Chriswell Minor Subdivision at 7:00 PM.
I'm making a motion to open the hearing.
Motion by Dorothea, second by Carol. Motion carried. So at this point in time, we will accept any comments from the public for this application.
Hey, motion.
All right, hearing none from the public. We did not read, we did not receive any comments in writing from the public either. I do want to just mention during the public hearing that this application was referred to the Albany County Planning Board following a review of the secret that occurred during this December 5th meeting. I just want to read into public record the comment from the Albany County Planning Board, which was, "This board has found that the proposed action will have no impact upon the jurisdictional determinate referring to this case, or will it have significant county mod or intrumunicipal impact." I'll ask the board if they have any questions for the applicant on this application. All right, I'll accept a motion to close in during the public hearing at 7:00 PM.
Motion.
Motion by Laura. Second by Brad. All in favor? Opposed, none? And motion carried. So, I'll also now accept a motion to approve the take. Subdivision.
Make motion.
Motion by Carol.
Second.
Second by Laura. All in favor? Opposed, none? Motion carried. So, a few things for this. We will sign the year mapping after this meeting and it'll be ready for you to pick up next week. You have 62 days to file with Albany County. Make sure you do it during that timeframe or else we'll have to have to do the process over again. And if you have any other questions for us, let us know.
So, once it's filed with the county, do I need to return something back here?
No, if you could just let us confirm that it was filed, that would be appreciated. Not everybody does that, but that would be appreciated.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so our next on the agenda is the St. Silvers Historical Appropriateness Review for a proposed solar installation on her residence. So she's seeking historical appropriateness from the board for a roof-mounted solar installation of non-reflective solar panels at her residence located within the Rensselaer Historic District. The proposed mounting is the front right side of the home. So she has been in attendance for several meetings with the board. I'm just going to do a general recap of what happened trying to do focus here since November 21st. The board has conducted a site visit of the property as a group and individually. We contacted interface with the State Historic Preservation Office, who confirmed that this is not a state-registered historic home, and just provided recommendations for the board that works non-bonding. I wanted to ask you if you have any new information that you would like the board to reflect on and present before we take action?
Well, I mean, I have this long essay prepared here, but then I was just given this opinion by.
Yes, I have that.
You all had that. So, I mean, is there even a reason to argue? I mean, I can make my points, but I think it's self-explanatory that all these applications should go forward.
So I did want to read that into the record. Arguments, because it does require.
I just wanted to say, first of all, you said that my solar house will be located at the front right side of the property. Well, that's entirely false.
I did say, right, it's the front side.
Oh, front side, okay. It's not on the front side.
What?
It's on the side.
Okay.
It's not on the front side. So, this is my front and these are my side. So, it's not in the front. But anyway, apparently regardless, it is irrelevant. And just wanted to say that last time we were here, the no votes were focusing on the SHPO recommendation. And at the time, there's only one communication from SHPO regarding my project that I'm, that I was made aware of, which was this email by Olivia Brazzi or Brazzi. And I did not have a copy of that email before the meeting. And I finally, after several requests, was able to receive a copy of that email where I was able to actually read it. And just to summarize in your email, it's, she says that there is no trigger for our review of this project. In other words, it's not being triggered to even being reviewed since it's not a designated historical landmark in itself. Two, she quotes, and I quote, "I explained in my previous email to you, then the only parameters that would apply would be local review." And as we know, our own Rensselaer Historic District Association and our building inspector, Tim Lippert, in their seasoned professional opinion, have given their complete and full recommendation for my application to proceed. So that would be your local review that she refers back to, which, that's number two, number three in the email. She also states, I quote, "Also, as I noted in previous emails, the general guidance that we give in relation to solar panels is to avoid installing them on street-facing slope roofs." Well, is mine not street-facing, but side-facing? It faces my neighbor, not the street, but also it says "avoid," which doesn't mean you cannot under any circumstances. So, I guess that's all I want to say. The no votes were based on this opinion. They should have been yes if, in fact, they were able to read this email, which I assume it was not visible, just as I was not able to see it. So, that's all I have to say for now.
I just want to clarify that we did read out those emails during the meeting that you were in attendance to that, of Olivia Brazzi's recommendations or just her review of SHPO. Those were distributed to you on December 8th, it looks like, was at least one that I sent, but.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
December 8th, I sent that over to you and they were, the recommendation from SHPO was read into the public record during the December 5th meeting for your application. I just want to clarify.
Right, just at the time, I did not have it. And you gave me photocopy of something that was cut off after half, first of half seconds.
I didn't copy that, but I.
Okay, no, I mean, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying it was not legible to me. I could not actually read it and make a proper argument at the time.
I just wanted to clarify that those, that was written into the public record and reading.
I don't remember that, okay.
So, at this time, as Christine stated, we did read a letter from the deputy director of Daniel McKay, deputy commissioner of Historic Preservation and Disusemen, regarding the solar panel installation for the Metta application. Bruce, can I read this now for both applications to satisfy for?
Sure. You want me to read it?
Yeah, I love talking. So, reading it for this one as well as visa preferences, because we did refer this over. So, just for completeness. I would appreciate it, thank you.
Chairperson Brooks, I am writing on behalf of the New York State Historic Preservation Office in the matter of rooftop solar projects proposed in the village of Rensselaerville for residential addresses in the National Register listed Rensselaerville Historic District. This district was listed on the National Register in September 1993. Two specific applications have been before the planning board in recent months, and in the course of deliberations, the planning board, our office for potential guidance, to inform local approval of these systems. I serve as deputy commissioner for Historic Preservation for the Oxford Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, and also hold the title of Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. In these capacities, I oversee New York State's programmatic responsibilities under state and federal historic preservation law. This includes implementation of the state and national register program and technical consultations on over 11,000 projects annually for potential historic resource impacts, among many other programmatic responsibilities. By the way, Dan is sick, and that's why he's not here reading it himself. Sorry. Going on, says Dan, "I was informed of the town planning board's request for guidance information on solar siding by staff in our technical consultation unit. I was also contacted by Bruce McKay, owner of 5036 Delaware Turnpike, the applicant seeking approval for a proposed solar installation. I conducted a site visit to 5036 Delaware Turnpike earlier this week. This address, known as the Stevens House in the 1993 National Register documentation, is a contributing structure in the Rensselaerville National Register District. By my read of the Town of Rensselaerville Solar Energy Local Law, Local Law Number One, this project meets all requirements for. Accordingly, the planning board is in receipt of course. Inspector that notes, quote, "The application is permitted by right to comply with the Town of Rensselaerville Solar Law," end quote. In the course of the planning board's review of this project, contact was made with staff in my office regarding the opinion of New York SHPO staff regarding this proposed siding on a primary roofline of a historic structure. Staff cited National Park Service guidance indicating that such siding is not preferable and that alternatives should be examined, such as placing solar panels on secondary rooflines, secondary structures, or on ground-mounted already. Given that your local siding laws, law does not identify treatment of solar installations on historic properties differently than other properties, when news of this outreach reached my, it's missing the word, desk, I was certain of, I was uncertain of the planning board's intent. The challenges of meeting these conditions vary greatly from historic property to historic property. This guidance is useful as a reference point for project design and discussion, but should not control the matter at hand. Per my site visit early, earlier this week, there are a number of site conditions that vastly diminish the visual impact of a potential primary rooftop mount at this address. The proximity of house to public sidewalks and roadways, the height of the house, the shallow roof pitch, and local topography would make this proposed installation nearly invisible from the front of the house or from downhill approaches from the east. In leaf-off conditions, there would be brief views of the primary roofline from the southwest. In leaf-on conditions, these views would be further diminished. It is hard for me to imagine that anyone passing by a solar project on this roofline would support the suggestion that the house had been diminished by the decision to propose or permit this system. A solar panel installation on the garage or a ground-mounted system behind the garage would be far more visible from public right-of-ways. Most importantly, the proposed system is completely reversible, meaning it can be de-installed at the end of its service, subsequent owner with no negative impact to the historic structure. My office shared is just that, guidance. And the National Park Service guidance in this instance is rather scant. By other programs that do provide my office with regulatory jurisdiction over homescale solar installations, my office has permitted hundreds of solar panel installations on historic homes across the state. Many are located on primary rooflines where the visual impact is diminished by building specific conditions. The project, as proposed, meets all local law siding requirements. The guidance correspondence from my office should not be considered to supersede what is clearly allowed in local law. My office has no regulatory jurisdiction in this matter. As a former town board member of New Scotland, I would urge the planning board to work within the parameters of the local siding law. Regards, Daniel. Daniel McKay.
Thank you for doing that. So, Christine, as you know, they did refer to your application here, so I want this to be added to your record as well for the project file. Do you have anything else that you want to state for your project?
No, thank you.
All right, with that being said, because at our last meeting, Dominic Higgins was not here, I just want to confirm on the record that you were able to watch the meeting recording from the December 5th meeting. You're familiar with the information that the applicant had before, or do you bear that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I'm just going to ask our town council to provide an overview of the voting that I've heard of the December 5th meeting and.
And do I ask a question before you do?
So he's the deputy commissioner.
And who is she?
She is the historic, I can pull up.
They're in the same office?
They're in the same office. Olivia reports to Daniel.
She is her boss. Sorry? He is her boss.
Yeah, he oversees.
But he's not, he is or he is not correcting the record or superseding her opinion?
I think.
I would say this is just giving an argument from the whole situation.
I think he's asking us to review this as just recommendations as they're not binding.
Can you wait a second?
When he, like the second last sentence, because the guidance of my office is generally just guidance.
That feels to me like he's referring to her guidance. That's how I interpret that. That he's referring to what she communicated.
I would interpret that as acceptable.
I'm sorry, say one more?
I would interpret as any guidance coming from this office, whether it was his communicating.
Contradictory. At least somewhat contradictory.
That's the case.
Right, so therefore, who has it?
Well, it's too bad he's not here.
Might have just butted in for a second. Why does this even go to SHPO? Because the planning board wants to conduct their due diligence and speak some other opinions. Obviously, we know they're non-binding, just that recommendations that came in the normal course of business. And I think this one falls in the same category, just a recommendation, albeit a bit odd, as you pointed out, sort of contradictory from the same office, but.
Can we just be specific? He is always, he is, he came to the site, he came to our house, and he's saying he had no problem with the.
She did too.
No, she did not.
Something else to keep in mind, which was, I could correct what you, that when we had the vote, the no votes were not based on the SHPO. Initial SHPO communication, both Laura and my side stated that.
Okay, so.
That's not what's in the minutes.
Imagine that anyone passing by a solar project on the shu roofline would support the suggestion that it diminished by the decision to propose or permit the system. That feels to me like he is superseding Olivia Brazzi's.
It doesn't matter because it's still binding.
Understood, but in terms of you want to weigh the value of these two communications, that has value. One visited, the other's didn't, one's her boss. That's all.
No, I appreciate you. I appreciate the discussion over the board, seeing what's matter, because that's what we're trying to unpack here, is interpreting, making determinations based on the evidence that we're receiving and the facts, so.
Is it appropriate to ask a question or a comment?
It's really not a public thing, but I would, Christine.
Yeah, so, I mean, given the comments that I've heard so far, first of all, I think it goes absolutely without saying that the top person in this office who can look at the situation has corrected whatever the person initially said. And also, after looking at it himself, rather than just writing a short opinion. Also, this person has vast experience in the entire state of New York, looking at thousands and thousands of historic buildings and their applications for solar panels. So this person is, shall we say, an expert, I think. But listening to some of the comments, it appears that maybe this is just merely to be looked at as just someone else saying something from the same office. And if that is how it's going to be viewed, then I would like to say, on my behalf, the things that he summarizes in here go point by point according to the laws that exist here in Rensselaerville, so that we have absolutely no doubt what exactly he is referring to when it comes to a, so, an application for special use permit, for solar application in Hamlet. So, should I proceed then with my comments so we can all understand? In Daniel McKay. Well, I have a feeling I must, because it's, some people are.
The floor is yours.
Yes, so let me just proceed then. So I would like to move on to the Town of Rensselaer's Historic Preservation Law, Chapter 130. I found that my project does not violate any of the demands or restrictions of that law. Paragraph 130-3, I assume everyone's familiar with that law, correct? Yes, of course. So paragraph 130-3, Authorization of Planning Board, Number A. It specifies that the planning board is to look at application involving, application involving physically altering the existing structure or construction or demolition, and alter existing structure or initiate new construction. My project does not physically alter the existing structure. It does not involve construction or demolition, does not alter existing structure, structures, or initiate new construction. So, in other words, what the planning board is supposed to be concerned about are all these items, of which my project does none. Next, I would like to go on to paragraph 130.5, the certificate of appropriateness. It repeats that the certificate of appropriateness is required when, quote-unquote, "a material exterior alteration, restoration, reconstruction, demolition, new construction, or moving any designated historic structure, make any material change in external appearance." My project does not involve material exterior alteration. I'm not changing the shape of the house or the roof. Restoration, not restoring anything. Reconstruction, not doing that either. Demolition, not doing that. New construction or moving any designated historic, not doing that either. I do not make. External appearance either, appearance, excuse me. I am not making material, i.e. significant change to the exterior, since, as we know, the panels adhere to the existing roof slope, are not reflective, are the same color as the existing roof, are located on a side roof, not facing the front of the house. And last, in this particular law, and most importantly, paragraph 130-7, quote, "The planning board shall not consider changes that are considered transitionary in nature." There you have it. So solar panels are transitionary. They're non-permanent. They are clip-on structures, like shutters, but the difference is that you can see the shutters from the street, whereas on a two-story roof, you cannot not see those panels on top of the roof. The first thing I wanted to also mention is that the Town of Rensselaer Solar Energy Local Law, Number One of 2021, according to Section 4H, Number One and Two, it states, "Small-scale roof-mounted solar energy systems are permitted to face any rear, side, front, yard area, any side of the house." That is the law. Then it goes on, "Roof-mounted solar energy systems installed on a sloped roof need to A, the highest point of the system shall not exceed the highest point of the roof to which it is attached, and B, edges of solar panels shall be parallel to the roof edges." My project complies with all of the above. So, you have two different laws. My project adheres and complies to all of the above. And that is what basically, in summary, Mr. Daniel McKay is saying in his summary about both projects, as a matter of fact. And again, we are supposed to, if the planning board needs input, then they go to local resources, which we have, again. We have our historical, Rensselaer Historical District Association and our own building inspector, who are seasoned, seasoned professionals with their opinion to both my project and so. In summary, I have given. To which Mr. McKay, in his letter, a full recommendation of our project. Again, he is an expert, the expert in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A question for either Andrew and Anna or any experienced colleagues. How has this board in the past interpreted the phrase "material change" in the external appearance? Candidly, I'm persuaded by the letter from SHPO, but once I read the here this language, I don't think it helps your case.
Well, actually.
Excuse me. So, I mean, how have we interpreted that in the past? What is or is not a material change in external appearance of structure?
I've only been around one of these before, and I think it was surrounding new siding from the house. It was really clear, clear determined, there was no question. This is my first experience with solar. Other than that, it's been simple.
But you see the conundrum.
Window, I agree 100%.
Yeah, the language is problematic.
Right. Where there was siding or windows or anything, that's very simple.
And 130.2, you started at 130.3, number two is, you know, part of the quote, "It fosters civic pride in the accomplishment of the past." So you have to look at the past and think, you know, what was there? And we're trying to draw people to the community, protect and enhance the town of Rensselaer's attract to visitors, and support and stimulus the economy therewithful provided. So we're trying to bring people here, you know, we have other businesses that are growing, and, you know, you can see this is the other side of the coin. So, you know, you read that and that was great, but that's, there's also, you know, it's more to the left.
So, with respect to the material that, what you mentioned. with respect to the material that, what you mentioned, planning board in the past decided when a material was changed, right? We're changing windows, well.
I don't think that's the definition of material, Christine, it doesn't mean the physical material.
Well, then, because that's what I'm picking up.
Visible, impactful, significant change.
Well, all right, never mind on that.
That's how I view that.
I mean, given that you can't really see the roofs that are up there, and we all know that they're not historical in the sense that these roofs have been replaced many times over, and they're not original features of these properties. So there is nothing to preserve in that sense, and you are merely doing what you're doing. If you replace the roof, you're just taking one material off and putting another material on, which is not historic. And yes, solar panels are not historical, but nor are, you know, asphalt shingles, and not even standing seen roofs. So, you know, if they were wood shingles and we got rid of those and covered those up, you might say, oh, that's really changing the character, but not after everything's been replaced several times.
So Christine, I want to thank you for bringing, citing these local laws and already helping with the resources of the board. I do want to just correct one thing that you stated. I did not receive anything from Rensselaer Historic Association or property. I did for McKenna, but I did not, and I didn't receive anything for Christine's.
That's true.
Okay.
But it also says in here that you reached out?
I did on November 29th. I sent it to your email, your personal email.
I was not in the country.
Oh, okay.
And had no idea that had been sent.
Okay. I didn't receive a out-of-office or anything, so I was unaware of that.
Yeah, I don't do this in my personal emails.
Okay.
And you've now set up a Rensselaer Historic District Association?
All right, so I got that from you after the meeting.
Absolutely, and I'm, you know, I'm here, happy to give testimony about things we've talked about as part of the bylaws of the RHDA.
When we get to Mr. McKenna's application, I have to correct something from a statement I made in the past. Fourth one, so, but I just wanted to just correct that statement. I didn't receive anything for years. I was not aware, but, um, Christine, do you have anything else for your application?
No, I think that's it, thank you.
Okay. So I just want to ask on how helpful Andrew can provide the review of the December 14th and the Historic Appropriateness Law and points of consideration for the board.
Sure, so last time there was a tie vote, which is a rarity in planning boards, but town law generally accepts that that's a non-action requiring further consideration of the matter. Thus, we're here tonight to take a vote on the matter with the whole constituent planning board. Sure, I can, I know Christine just read through most of our local law that are, for reference, we're reading this Historic Preservation Law. I will skip forward to what the planning board is actually considering in this approval of Certificate of Appropriateness. The planning board's decision shall be based on the following principles. Properties which contribute to the character of the historic district shall be retained and preserved with their historic features altered as little as possible. Any alteration of existing properties shall be compatible with the historic character as well as the surrounding district. New construction shall be compatible with the district. New construction shall not have a negative impact on the physical condition. In applying the principle of compatibility, the planning board shall consider the following factors. The general design, character, and appropriateness of the property to the property of the proposed alteration of new construction or materials. The scale of the proposed alteration or new construction in relation to the property itself, surrounding materials in the neighborhood, texture, materials, and their relation to similar features of other properties in the neighborhood, visual harmony with the surrounding properties, including the proportion of the property's front facade, proportion and arrangement of windows and other openings, roof shape and pattern of the spacing of properties on the street, and lastly, the ordnance of historic architectural or other features of the significance of the property.
Thank you. At this time, we will consider this application complete and we will take action on it. So I will now accept the notion that for the reasons stated in the Historic Appropriateness Town Law, that we approve the appropriateness of the proposed change for applicants to install roof-mounted solar installation of non-reflective solar panels onto their home locata 1445, Hallelujah 351, Rensselaer, New York. We're going to do a roll call vote, so that's going to go to victory. Dorothy, how do you vote?
I vote for the panels. I've done extensive research, and my opinion has not changed.
Laura? I, I'm still a no. I don't think it's appropriate for historical laws.
Dominic?
Oh, yes.
I'm in favor.
Uh, I vote no. Opinion is the same. And you can interpret it as solar panels do not belong in historic buildings.
I feel the same way. I don't feel that it's appropriate for a historical district. That said, in regards to SHPO, I find not only that contradicts the opinions of the fact that they do not have a legal point of view, to be ridiculous, for the reason that our own guidelines are more guidelines and not specifically a public to approve it.
So you're a yes?
Yes, and I hope that the town at some point will give this board update of the 2011 laws.
So with that being said, the motion was five in favor, she opposed. Motion carried and approved. Do you have anything else, Christine?
No, thank you very much for your review.
Okay. The next on the agenda is the McKenna Historic Appropriateness for Solar Installation as well. So similarly, Mr. McKenna has been with the board since early November. I think November 7th was your first meeting. Speaking Historic Appropriateness for Roof Mounted, great, Roof Mounted Solar Installation of Non-Reflective Solar Panels at his residence, that is, hold a state and national registered historic home, contributing to Rensselaer Historic District. In summary, what has occurred is, the board has conducted a site visit to the property. So at SHPO, as we just learned in the prior application. We did reach out to the Rensselaer Historic District, as we discussed. But Catherine, I did receive your email, that was the one written from a neighbor perspective. But at the end of that, you do state that you are the chair, so I misstated that in the first. So I apologize for that. I went through all the emails, so.
I had no inkling that it would become what it became.
No, you're fine.
Or I would have written a much more formal.
No, you're fine. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, too. But we will get your contact with the RHDA email later. At the have provided additional photographic evidence and the impact of the solar, that the solar may have, and different aspects pertaining to the village. We have, as I said, been in contact with SHPO. Additionally, we just heard from Danny Kaye, the Deputy Commissioner of SHPO, regarding this application, conducted a site visit. And we also received previously mentioned local letters of support for this application, but most recently, two additional ones from the members, from members of the community writing for their support of the solar. And that was from William and Jeanette Rice and Ken Storms. Would you like me to read those out loud?
Please.
Okay.
Are these new, new additions, or have they been in the record before?
No, these were the ones I sent this week. So they haven't been read in the record, but they are in the project files. So the first one is from Ken Storms. This was received on January 15th at 3:27 PM. I am writing again in support of the application by Bruce McKenna of his certificate of historic appropriateness that will allow him to install solar panels on his home in the Hamlet of Rensselaerville. I hope that this is, I hope that in the intervening weeks, the planning board has been able to get better, to get better information regarding the federal and New York State guidance for dealing with solar installations on the National Historic Register, Registered Properties. If so, I think you will see that the government guidance allows for solar use, especially given that it is not permanent structural alteration of the historic building. I also hope that members have been able to visit the historic district to see for yourselves the virtually negligible impact that the proposed installation would have on the aesthetics of the historic district. That said, I trust that you'll be able to approve Mr. McKenna's application. As I stated in my previous letter, I again urge the planning board to establish a working relationship with the Rensselaer Historic District Association or to obtain thoughtful consideration of application within the district or within the area of impact. Also, given the importance of the district to the economical being of our town and its tax base, it would be advisable to have a resident of the district as a board member. Thank you for your consideration, Ken Storms. So the second one that we received in support are from William and Jeanette Rice. These, this is dated January 14th, 2025. Would you please share this email signing board members before addressing the McKenna Solar Application at the January 16th Planning Board Meeting? We appreciate having a public reading at this meeting and having this email placed into the record. Thank you. Briefly, for those on the planning board who do not know us, my husband Stanley has lived in the Hamlet of Rensselaer since 1815, seven generations, and have served in a multitude of helping roles. I'm a Long Island transplant, married to voted for over 56 years. Past president and board member of the Rensselaer Historic District Association. Served on the Town of Rensselaer Comprehensive Planning Board, was consulted by the planning board for input into our current zoning law, and served on the ZBI, which is the zoning board of the field. We are writing in support of Mr. McKenna's solar application at 5036 Delaware Turnpike. We seek your approval. Personnel from the New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation, they consult with technical experts from the U.S. Department of the Interior and more used preservation briefs from the Secretary of the Interior Standards with guidelines. Recommendations are generally presented to make it possible to repair, alter, and make additions while preserving portions of a structure or features of the historical, cultural, and architectural value. Any recommendations from SHPO are just that, recommendations, not mandates. Furthermore, preservation briefs clearly state that that being listed on the historic register does not mean an entire building is frozen in time or that every aspect of a building must remain intact without change. Mechanical systems, i.e. plumbing, heating, electricity, need work efficiently. Most historic or older systems will likely need to be replaced to meet modern requirements. Specific recommendations found in the Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines on solar technology in PETA is preferable to install low-profile solar device on a or even a leave-of-will from the public right of way. Historic roofing, material, or negatively impacted by buildings of historic character and irreversible. It is also recommended that the solar technology be implemented to improve the energy efficiency of the building. The facade or front wings of the Stevens House has significant historic architectural features, as described in the National Register for Historic Places. Features are the Georgian and Federal residential architecture, broad five-bay structure with a central plaidian window, and wide, he had mentioned, doorway, 12 by 12 windows. These features of the house will not be negatively impacted by installing low-profile solar panels on the existing block roof of modern material. Minimally visible panels from certain locations will be compatible with other structures in the district where two solar panel installations already exist. The proposed solar installation project is congruous with the policies and the purpose set forth by the Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines on Solar Technology and Principles for approval, guided by the Town of Rensselaer Historic Preservation Law. Initially, the McKenna application is in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan of the Town of Rensselaer, intended to provide a reasonable evaluation of designated historic landmarks, structures, and districts in order to accomplish the policy set forth, minimal falls and delay to owners or of affected properties of historic significance. We highly support your proposal for the McKenna Solar Application. So those two were received this week. I apologize if I butchered those. I got them this month, so not a great time to have retainers in at the moment. So that being said, I also wanted to just acknowledge that Bruce, we did receive a correspondence from the label to our presentation that we did retain this week, and I want to see that it asserts the applicant's position in favor of the solar panels.
Yeah, I'd like to read that into the record.
Yeah, I was going to ask that next, so.
Before I do, though, can I ask Mr. Churchill a question? You're making the assumption that solar panels would negatively impact the economics of the town. What are you basing that on?
When somebody, let's say someone drives from X distance and comes to the town of Rensselaerville, don't they want to see it what it was? When you have a vision of history, you want to, you don't, you want to see it as it was, like it says in the law, by stating foster accomplishments of the past. So that's what I'm basing.
Does that mean that you think we should tear down all the electrical wiring that goes into the houses that were put into the 1910s?
Well, you're kind of, you're talking about two different things. Because now you're talking about saving the property and making things safer.
No, no. I'm talking about the visual impact of all the wires in the town that are not historical, or the visual impact of storm windows, or the visual impact of asphalt.
Storm windows, I would say, yeah, you know, when you do storm windows. So Mike, I have a question for you. Okay, I ask Churchill a question.
Sure.
When you buy a historic house, you have the expectation of heating and siding and everything that goes along with it versus if you live down in the middle of the country. Do you admit that there's probably compromises that would be made when you buy a house in the middle of the country? How long have you owned it?
Seven months.
Seven months. So you knew going into buying the house in seven months that you were buying a house in a historic district on historic registry? And I would, you know, seems like a reasonable thing that you say, geez, I might have to make some compromises in owning this house.
Well, I already am, and I also went and very carefully researched the federal and state laws, and it was very clear. You said that no historic houses should have solar, but that's not the opinion of the, of the U.S. government. It's not the opinion of the Parks Service. It's not the opinion of the New York State Preservation League, and it's not the opinion of SHPO. It's your personal opinion.
I'm not representing.
Yeah, it's your personal opinion, and it's also your personal opinion that somehow solar would affect the the economic attraction of the town. It could be exactly the opposite. People might be more attracted to Rensselaer if it had solar panels on it. You just don't know.
And maybe time will tell.
And you just don't for those solar laws. And I'd like to read my lawyer's letter into the record. Dear Ms. Brooks, I have been retained by Bruce McKenna, who is the owner of 5036 Delaware Turnpike. As the planning board is aware, Mr. McKenna has been attempting to obtain a certificate of appropriateness for the installation of solar panels on the roof of his property. Please accept this letter in support of his application. We're saying, which we understand will be considered at board's meeting on January 16th, 2025. We urge the planning board to comply with local solar energy law and historic preservation law and grant him a certificate of appropriateness. Clearly, this project is compatible with the character of the structure in the district for the following reasons. First, solar panels are present in the Hamlet and on neighboring structures. While this does not require that Mr. McKenna be permitted to place solar panels on his house, the character of the Hamlet has been one that included solar panels and has for a decade. Second, the solar panels will not alter the structure of the home whatsoever. They are non-invasive temporary additions to the roof. The roof itself is not an historical feature of the home. In fact, it is a black asphalt shingle roof that is 10 to 15 years old. The Town Solar Energy Law of 2021, the solar law, and the Town of Rensselaer Comprehensive Plan of 2007 encourages landowners to utilize solar energy in accordance with the comprehensive plan and allows for roof-mounted systems to face any direction. While Mr. McKenna's plans comply with the solar law, Mr. McKenna understands, I do, that the local historic preservation law must also be considered as the Hamlet on the state and national registry for historic places. Courts have determined that the Office of Parks Recognition and Historic Preservation may suggest several alternative and mitigating factors to municipalities who may then consider feasible and prudent alternatives to the fullest effect practically. However, municipalities are not required to, quote, "do everything possible to preserve the historic site," end quote, under the state Historic Preservation Law, and it states the case law Eber versus New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, bunch of illegal godly book that somebody, I'm sure, Andrew, you understand, but I don't. Or the C.R. Club versus the Board of Education in the city of Buffalo. This is New York state law. In addition, there is no other viable spot economically for a solar system to be installed in the McKenna house other than the south-facing roof. SHPO's suggestion, and this is Olivia Brazzi's before the site visit, that the system be placed on the south garage roof is impossible, as the size of the system would be too small to generate sufficient energy for the house, and the engineering necessary to get the wiring to the electric utility meter too expensive. Any ground-mounted system on the rear-facing slope behind the house would be permanent, far more conspicuous, and extremely expensive, and would also lower the value of the property. In light of these facts, Rensselaer's local historic preservation law binds the planning board to grant a certificate of appropriateness based only on a consideration of, one, the properties of the structure that contribute to the character of the historic district with as little alteration as possible. That alteration, two, of existing properties shall be compatible with its historic nature as well as the surrounding district. Three, new construction shall be compatible with the district. And four, new construction shall not have a negative impact on the physical condition of the existing historic structure. First and foremost, the scope of work proposed by Mr. McKenna makes no alteration, restoration, reconstruction, demolition, or new construction of temporary solar panels, nor is he making any changes since the panels themselves match installed at the same angle and as flush as possible to the low slope per federal and state guidelines for historic houses and in compliance with the town's own solar law. Per a supporting email from William and Jeanette Rice sent to the planning board, the National Register of Historic Places lists residential architecture, broad five-bay structure with a central Palladium window, wide pendent doorway, and original 12 by 12 windows as the historic features of 5036 Delaware Turnpike. The roof is not a feature of historic nature, nor does it contribute to the historic nature of the hamlet, as other roofs in the hamlet have solar panels. The features of historic nature will not be altered or impeded in any way by the addition of solar panels that match the current color of the roof. As for the first principle, the historic features and the property of the structure are not altered at all. The second and third principle discuss compatibility with the district. The hamlet already has solar panels, so the addition of another roof will not make any of the roofs stand out against others or disturb the visual harmony of the hamlet. Unless there are steps to be taken to remove the existing solar panels that have been in the hamlet for the last 10 years, Mr. McKenna's project would have no impact on the existing nature of the hamlet. The planning board is restricted from claiming this project is not compatible with the historic district when multiple structures have solar panels. As to the fourth principle, the addition of solar panels will not have a negative impact on the physical condition of the structure per the letter from Michael E. Mealy, professional engineer, I think you guys have that. Since Mr. McKenna's project complies with the requirements of the solar law and the structure is not altered in any way, nor does it create a difference in the character of the hamlet as considered by the local historic preservation law, his project should receive a certificate of appropriateness. Finally, should the planning board decide to deny the application, we contend that Mr. McKenna will suffer economic hardship, and per the local law, plans to appeal to the zoning board of appeals and present his hardship to them in their determination. Mr. McKenna could face an economic harm of $10,000 to $20,000 a year in energy savings, as well as the loss of federal tax credits in the amount of $15,000. As the board is aware, courts will review the decision of a town planning board and shall overrule a decision if it finds that the board abused its decision in acting arbitrarily, capriciously, or illegally. Rosano versus Planning Board of the Town of North Elva, 653 New York State, 2nd, 706, 1996. By depending on a non-binding advisory opinion of a state agency instead of applying the local solar law on a case-by-case basis, it is obvious the planning board acted outside of the standards they have set for themselves and based their determination on. Per the email from Olivia Brazzi, SHPO is not involved in this and has no binding authority over the project. Planning boards must act pursuant to their zoning code provisions and local laws and apply statutes to make a reasonable determination. See Perd versus Zoning Board of Appeals, Village of South Nyack, 956 New York State, 2nd, 542, Second Department, 2012. As such, for the foregoing reasons, we submit that Mr. McKenna should be granted approval for the installation of solar panels on the roof at 5036 Delaware Turnpike. Thank you for your consideration. Jennifer Domenele and her firm is Smith, Domenele, and Eddie from Old. I would like to speak quickly to, I forget your name, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, Robert. What Robert said about Dan Mackey and Olivia Shippey, there is no contradiction here. He overruled her. It's that clear. She came to the site visit. She came to the site visit with him, and he wrote this letter.
The letter you just read from your attorney said that that should not be considered at all.
That's her old opinion.
Which are you saying? Do you want to consider?
Got it. Olivia Shippey saw a bunch of photographs of my house, actually.
Sorry, my question, sir.
What's your question?
I don't have the letter for it. Your lawyer said that SHPO is not binding, but now you're asking us to make it binding?
No, no, no.
Yes or no?
No, it's not binding whatsoever, but you are by law supposed to consult them or appropriate federal, state agencies for guidance.
Your lawyer just said you shouldn't.
No, not a mandate. Not a mandate.
There's a little bit of a make a sale shop.
Can I please explain this clearly? Let me explain this clearly. This lawyer wrote this letter before Dan Mackey came to my house to visit. He's acting on the information that Olivia Shippey wrote her email in the reference.
So now your lawyer likes Shippey.
So lawyer hasn't even seen SHPO's letter, okay? So the lawyer basically is saying, you got to follow the local law. But I will say this, that she came with Dan Mackey. Instead of photographs, they looked at the site, and he wrote his email very clearly. This is not a problem for SHPO. So to what extent that you would go to SHPO for guidance, please view Mr. Mackey's letter as the definitive email or letter. That's all. So that's.
You have anything else? You have any other information that you want to superhand to the board at this time?
No, I mean, look, it speaks for itself, and I just urge the board to vote in an appropriate manner, and I think my lawyer's letter is very clear that we have to follow the local laws of Rensselaer. It's that clear.
Dominic, I just want to confirm with Dan that we watched the services to give him the kind of application that you're up to speak. Okay. Andrew, do we have to go over what the non-action vote resulted in again?
I think everyone gets the non, there's a tie vote, which is why we're here again. But for purposes of clear record, just for everyone's benefit, I'll briefly read this local law, which we are all close to memorizing, I assume. The planning board's decision shall be based on the following principles. Properties which contribute to the character of the historic district shall be retained and preserved with their historic features altered as little as possible. Any alteration of existing properties shall be compatible with this historic character as well as the surrounding district. New construction shall be compatible with the district. New construction shall not have a negative impact on the physical condition. In applying the principle of compatibility, the planning board shall consider the following factors. General design, character, and appropriateness to the property of the proposed alteration of new construction or materials. The scale of the proposed alteration or new construction in relation to the property itself, surrounding materials, surrounding properties, and the neighborhood. Texture, materials, and their relation to similar features of other properties in the neighborhood. Visual harmony with surrounding properties, including the proportion of the property's front facade, proportion and arrangement of windows and other openings, roof shape and the pattern of spacing of properties on the street. And lastly, the importance of historic, architectural, or other features to the significance of the property.
With that being said, I will now accept the motion that for the reasons stated in the historical appropriateness town law, that we approve the appropriateness of the proposed change for the applicant to install roof-mounted solar installation of non-reflected solar panels onto the front of their home located at 5036 Delaware Turnpike, Rensselaer. We will follow the same procedure and just do a roll call vote. So Dorothy, how do you vote?
I still vote yes. I don't fear that the solar panels have a negative impact in the town of Rensselaer. They need shops and stores and entertainment and hotels. Solar panels is a reason that, Rob.
Laura?
I'm still no.
Dominic?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Five votes yes, two votes no. Motion approved. I would just like to say one thing. As the chair of this board, I stand by referring this over to SHPO, and also with Robert's points that this has been, that it was contradictory of their not, we should value SHPO. Some of these arguments flow back and forth. When the SHPO recommendations first came in, we were told not to value SHPO due to the fact, and I think this is they were not going in the direction that supported the application for approval, that we should value the Rensselaer Historic District Association, which we did vote, and thank you, Catherine, for sending that in, and I look forward to more information. But I just want to make it clear, I stand by all of the work that we did on both of these applications and referring over to SHPO, so they can help the board and all members make informed decisions, and helps us interpret a very vague and subjective town law that, as Caroline believed said, we need to look to Christine's update, too. So I want to thank you all for going through this process and being the first of these applications to go through the town. I know it was a difficult process, but we thank you for your participation and everything. So with that being said, the McKenna solar is approved as well, and I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So what?
Motion by Robert, decided by Carol, all in favor.